The applications this evening is as follows. First will be 2016-13 David Rosner, 51 Jaffrey Court. Second will be 2015-24 REC Development and Consulting Corp., 32 Park Avenue. Third will be 2015-25 REC Development Corp., 34 Park Avenue. Fourth will be 2016-25 Stefan Badonowitz, 20 Maple Street. Fifth will be 2016-26 Jennifer and Jason Ortman, 4 Circle Drive. Sixth will be 2016-32 Joseph Di Matteo and Elaine Fold, 7 Gray Rock Terrace. Seventh will be 2016-31 Panos Papapanou and Ivantia Lala, 20 Lewis Road. It's a tongue twister, I'm sorry. 2016-30 will be number eight Evan and Allison Barth, 11 Beechwood Road. And ninth will be 2016-29 Eileen Fisher, 116 and 118 Main Street. And tenth will be 2016-05 Donato Capital Corp., 30 and 40 South Broadway. So with that, Sarah, is everybody up to date on their taxes?
Yes.
Okay. So the first item of business will be 2016 -- oh, excuse me. One item before we get started. Would everybody, if you haven't already, and I'm sorry, I haven't taken a look at the minutes yet from August, September, and October, would you please review them and then maybe we can take a vote on them at the next meeting? And maybe we'll have November by then also possibly. We'll see. But at least we'll get those three adopted next meeting. Okay. With that, first item up is 2016-13 David Rosner, 51 Jaffrey Court. Please remember to take the microphone and identify yourself.
I'm sure it's on. David Getz, Liman and Getz Engineering. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have added some clarifications to the plans since we were here last month, identifying some trees, clarifying the existing conditions versus what was there previously and what is proposed. We added a note or two to the plans in response to the engineering comments.
That's pretty much it. Okay. Any comments from any of the members of the board on this item? Any comments from anyone in the public on this matter? No? All right. Doug, you and Ed, you're both fine with the plans?
Yes.
Mary Ann, you have a resolution?
Yeah, I do. Whereas in May 2016, David Rosner applied for site development plan approval to construct a walkway and patio at his house at 51 Jaffrey Park, which is located in the Village's View Preservation District. Whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and submitted memorandum dated May 4th, July 1st, September 30th, and October 28th. Lucille Muns reviewed the plans and submitted reports dated July 2nd and September 30th. All of Han's and Muns' comments were addressed to their satisfaction. Proposed improvements required variances for encroachment into the aqueduct buffer and coverage, which the zoning board of appeals granted on August 23rd, subject to applicant reducing the size of the patio by removing a row of patio stones that would be nearest to the aqueduct, which applicant subsequent plans did. The planning board held a public hearing on the application on July 6th, October 5th, and November 2nd. The improvements would have no impact on views of the Hudson River. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants site development approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled site plan for the Rosner property, 51 Jaffrey Court, with no conditions.
Can I have a motion?
Several.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is 2015-24 REC Development Corp., 32 Park Avenue. And then the next item will be REC Development Corp., 34 Park Avenue.
Good evening. I'm Adam Riley, members of the board, relating to Chelcavetment. I am representing this evening the owners of the senior home, as you're sure you know they went built. 32 Park Avenue is Alexandra and Eric Topel. And 34 Park is Jordan and Sarah Lohegoff. They've submitted letters of authorization for us to appear on their behalf. As we were grading out the lots, the planning included some minor issues with the mirror here, and it just made it much more appealing to get off the stairs and down into lower patio by placing the roll wall here. The same is true for both of them actually, but the hatched areas or the additional coverage that were coming back here, we still comply with the zone warrants or as you approve, the slight individual increase in coverage.
Okay. Any questions from any of the board members? No? Any questions from or comments from anyone in the audience? No? I think Ed and Doug, you're both okay there. Mary Ann, you have resolutions on? We'll take 32 first.
I'll do 32. I'll do 32 Park Avenue. They're both exactly the same though. Whereas on August 5th, 2015 REC Development received site plan approval for a senior family residence at 34 Park Avenue, Lot 2, now referred to as 32 Park Avenue. On December 2nd, the applicant received revised site plan approval. The applicant now seeks to revise the site plan further by increasing coverage as a result of a wall of sidewalk necessary by grading issues. With these revisions, the house remains within the setback and coverage limits of the zoning code. Planning board held a public hearing on the revised site plan tonight. Han Engineering reviewed the revisions in a memo dated October 5th, listed several issues which were addressed to Han's satisfaction in the subsequent submission. The action is type 2 under SEACRA. Resolved that the planning board grants the application for revised and improved site plan as shown in the drawing, entire proposal for senior residence. And then there's one for 34.
Exactly the same.
Except it's at 34 Park Avenue.
All right. Can I have a motion on both, since they're both the same?
I handed two such -- oh, they were clipped together. 32 was in one clip and 44 was in the other.
I have two 24s.
Okay, sorry. Still here.
34. I'm not doing the addressing. Our idea.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Approving.
We'll prove -- well, the first one approves 32 Park Avenue first.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And can I have a motion on 34 Park Avenue?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. You're all seated. Bye. And I am recused on this item and Sheila Ty will chair.
Beau Witt for Stefan Badonowitz at 20 Maple Street, and the architect for the project. We were at the planning board a few months ago, and at the time, there were some issues with lot coverage that had to do with an existing shed, and there were some questions about tree protection that have now been addressed, as well as notes about access to the property. We have since removed the shed from the property to get rid of any coverage issue that we would have had. We've noted how we want the contractors to access the property for construction so it won't be disturbing any existing trees on the land. And as I mentioned at the previous meeting, this property is noted on the site plan, and the contractors know there'll be no excavation with equipment here. There's a single pier for the second floor addition, and they're going to dig a grade beam by hand for the mudroom enclosure that will be in the existing breezeway.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? No? We have a resolution on this? Public hearing?
No. Public comment.
Public comment, I'm sorry. No? Okay. Resolution?
Yeah. In September 2016, Stefan Badonowitz applied for site plan approval to enlarge the second floor over an existing deck and enclose an existing breezeway on his house at 20 Maple Street, which is located in the View Preservation District. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated September 7th, listed a number of items which were addressed in the subsequent submission which Han found satisfactorily addressed as concerns. Whereas the additions would not have a negative impact on the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties or public areas. Planning board held a public hearing on September 7th and November 2nd. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA. Therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled additions and alterations to Badonowitz residence. And again, no conditions.
Motion? Motion to accept the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
The next item is 2016-26 Jennifer and Jason Ortman, 4 Circle Drive.
Again, William Witt here with homeowner Jennifer Ortman, 4 Circle Drive. At last month's planning board meeting, there were a few items that needed to be corrected on my part, the architectural. They include some lot coverage and floor area calculations on sheet PB1. Revised sheet has been submitted. There was a few notes for added tree protection that had been added to the site plan. In addition to that, the board referred us to the zoning board, and we were granted the zoning variances for front yard setback and lot coverage on the October 25th meeting. I did receive a memo from Han Engineering earlier today. It had three items on it, and I believe that they could probably be addressed administratively with Han's engineer.
Yeah, there were.
Lucille had some comments.
I think on the landscape, I think the main concern was that, well, I think the trees were identified. None of the shrubbery was identified, and there were a couple of cut sheets that were given to us showing all different kinds of flowers, but there's no identification as to what is going where within the --
Is on the landscape plan?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's my understanding that she's got the existing trees shown on the property, some infill, and then she has a schedule of which trees and size of the trees that would fill in for the buffer along the property lines, both to the right and to the, excuse me, the east and the north.
I think what it is is the island, the island on the circle, on the arc, that island of plantings. There's no identification as to what anything is in there other than the trees, and yet, that's what I'm saying, the landscaper provided several pages of different types of plantings, but there's no knowing what exactly is going where, or if any, what if any of these plants are being included in that island. So I think what you need to do is we can approve it if the board is okay with it, and if there are no comments from the public. We can prove it's subject to, though, you're providing additional information on the landscaping as to, and that will be approved by the landscape architect, our consulting landscape.
Yeah, I'm sure that's something we can work out with the landscape architect.
Do you want the, you want the comments?
Yes, please. Kate, do you have a resolution on this one too, Mary Ann?
In September 2016, Jennifer and Jason Ortman applied for site plan approval to construct a two-story addition, porch, new two-car garage, rear deck retaining while walkway and driveway at their house at 4 Circle Drive. The proposed improvements required variances for coverage and incursion into the front yard setback, which variances were granted by the zoning board of appeals at its October 25th, 2016 meeting. We didn't get a copy of that, but I, now that it's televised, I watched it on the TV today. Whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated September 7th and October 4th, listed a number of items, most of which were addressed in subsequent submissions. Whereas Lucille Muns, the Village's landscape architect and staff report dated September 3rd and September 30th, made a number of comments, and Muns in the staff report dated October 26th made several recommendations that remain to be addressed. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application on September 7th, October 5th, and tonight. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled additions and alterations to Ortman residence, subject to first, compliance with the list, the items listed in Lucille Muns' October 26th, 2016 staff report and approval thereof by Muns, and compliance with the items listed in Han's November 2nd, 2016 memorandum to Han's satisfaction.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Quickly.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm a Yankee fan, so let's just.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next item is 2016-32 Joseph Di Matteo and Elaine Fold, 7 Gray Rock Terrace. Di Matteo? My name is Mattaroli, not Mattaroli. No.
My name's Christina Griffin. I'm the architect for extensions and alterations to the --
Christina, I think you'd have to hold the microphone closer to you.
Okay. I'm the architect for the project, and what we're planning to do is to expand the second floor. The house is currently like a one and a half story house, which has two bedrooms up in the roof line. And we're also going to expand the garage so that we have a two-car garage rather than a one-car garage. And we're also going to expand the deck in the back of the house. This is our site plan, and I'm showing in blue the additional floor area that we're adding to the house. We are slightly over the maximum floor ratio by like 15 square feet, so we need a variance for that. The blue is the additional floor area, but if you look over here at our coverage counts, as you're showing, the one-story garage below, and we're adding another bay to that. When it comes to coverage, we're adding about 560 square feet to the coverage, and we are already over the maximum by 100 square feet, so we're also going to be requesting a variance for that. This is a house where the owners have three cars, and the garage there is very narrow, so they would like to have a two-car garage so they can actually have parking off-street within the front yard setback. We're also planning to expand the deck in the back, and that deck also requires a variance because it's non-conforming currently. What we'd like to do is widen it and make it a more usable deck because the very rocky area of the yard is not very usable. This is right off the kitchen, and we want to make, this is their primary outdoor space, and we just want to make it a little larger. We received the comments today from Han Engineering, and a lot of them are questions to ask for clarification on our calculations, so we're planning to respond to that. Clarifications on the storm drainage system. Just so you can see the floor plans, this is the additional garage bay that we're adding. We're also planning to add a second entrance. This is a breezeway, to make it a more usable space, and this is our enlarged deck area. And on the second floor, there are two small bedrooms, and we're planning to raise the roof so that we have a four-bedroom layout, three bedrooms on this side, and a new master bedroom over the two-car garage. There currently is only one bathroom up here, shared by the family, and that's the reason why they want to add another master bath and another bedroom. This is just the look of the house. Originally, this, we have some photographs down here. This house has a, like a half-story on the second floor. We're going to raise that wall so we can have proper windows, more natural light into the bedrooms. This is the existing one-car garage. We're planning to expand that, so we have two-car garage, and then adding a master bedroom suite on top. This is the deck, which is in need of repair and rebuilding, so that's part of the whole project. And you can tell that this is steep and rocky, so we want to make sure that when we renovate that deck, it's very comfortable. And on the back of the house, we're now currently a dormer, one dormer for the hall bath, and we're planning to raise the roof on both sides so that there's more usable space, and we end up having four bedrooms instead of two on the top floor. So, you know, most of the comments from Han Engineering, we feel that are just clarifications, and we need, we'll be responding to those in the next few days.
Any comments from any of the board members?
Yes. Okay. And somewhere in the footnotes, you say what you're going to do with trees that you take down, you're going to grind them and use them someplace. I think I read that on this one. But you don't say in the plan where the trees are, if there are any trees that are coming down. In the expansion areas, are there trees that are coming down?
I don't think we have that note.
I thought I read it somewhere.
Well, the trees are --
Well, anyway, are there any trees coming down in the expanded garage or patio?
No.
And I have a lot of questions on the drainage, some of which were in Han's comments, like, where does the water drainage from the expanded driveway go?
I'm going to take a hard look at that. It's one of the things I have to take a look at. I think that the driveway's sloping out towards the --
I think it slopes to the back.
And will probably be introducing --
I'm mixing it up with the other tree.
I'm going to take a look at that. I need to, we need to really see if we need trench drainage.
And this becomes a generic question on two or three others and previous ones. You have an assumed percolation rate for the subsurface drainage? I don't like assumptions. You know what happens to assume?
Yes.
Is there a test or anything with this?
No, I didn't see one on here. We have a, we have a bunch of comments about the drainage and going on.
Yeah, I see. Is that one of them? I don't know.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
I know in other projects, sometimes we do the actual perk tests when we're excavating, but --
I like to approve things ahead of time.
Okay.
Because what happens if it fails?
I understand, and I know how much the perk test can affect those calculations, so we'll have to get it for you. All right?
Was that one of your comments?
No, it wasn't. But there's, I mean --
You had like extensive comments on the drainage.
Right. I mean, I just got them this afternoon, so I need to go through them.
If you did have an assumption, was there an assumed perk rate on there once?
Yes, there is.
In the calculation?
But is that what you typically do, is expect a perk test before planning board approval?
We've been doing that since the last time you were here. We've run into trouble with the perk test after not working out and compromising the size of the system.
I think those are these tree protections shown on there. There are several large trees in the front yard, and I don't know about around back, if there are trees around back that are going to be impacted by the development, and also what's going to be the construction access here. I think you need to identify those items on the plans.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of those items, I think, were on, we're going to go through them carefully and make sure we provide that information.
Is there any issue, Ed, or with the height?
We're going to need it. Christina, you have to take a look and clarify the height. There wasn't a final elevation for the roof ridge.
Sure.
And the height's 35 below this point, which would be the basement door to the ridge.
That also brings up the question about, you know, scale and the neighbors, which is typically, and should be done for this. One of the things we really wanted to know is, how's this going to fit in with everything else that's there? Because it's pretty significant, especially the way you've designed it so that your attic spaces are quite extensive. So I think it's important to know in context what this will look like with the other neighbors. And there's a prescribed way that everyone else does it, which I'm sure you probably have done.
Yeah, we've done it many times.
Yeah, so then that just has to be done here.
As included in Han's comments to along with all the other ones.
The view from the front gets a lot bigger.
Very good idea.
We'll provide a scale study.
Okay. Any other comments from any of the board members? Any comments from the public on this item? Is this, well, I think there are a number of issues that really need to be resolved before we send them to the ZBAs.
Right.
So I think you have to come back next time with answers to Han's and the questions raised by the board here tonight. And I think if you have those questions satisfactorily answered, I think you'd be in better position to go to the ZBAs.
So we'll come back here next, and then to the ZBAs.
Okay. Okay. Next item is, I want to recuse on this one also, but it is 2016-31 Panos Papapanou and Ivantia Lala, 20 Lewis Road. And Sheila Ty will act as chairperson for this.
Good evening. Pat Steinsteiner from Gotham Design Community Development, representing the Papapanou. They can't do it. Papapanou. Papapanou, okay, later. He says his own palace, so I get that. They have a nice piece of property over on Lewis. They would like to build a swimming pool in their rear yard. First issues are that it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's got an area that's less than 34,000 square feet in the zone that requires 40,000 square feet. One of the results off of that is they, there's more than one area, they have limits on the site coverage, which we are exceeding. The existing house already exceeds what's permitted, and we're proposing to add to it. We've got a relatively small pool, 16 by 32, one foot of coping, small terrace area, 10 by 18 behind it, and then we've also got a two-foot high retaining level of the area. We're at the start of this. We've gotten Han Engineering's comments, and they all seem exactly on point. There are things that we need to address, which, you know, we will between now and the next meeting. I have photographs of this, if it would be at all helpful.
I think so.
So what I'll do is hand these down, and I'll say what they are each one, but it's also got it written on the back. And what we'll do, because I think this is important enough, is we'll make a sheet of these that we submit in the next, so you've just got it as part of the record. First is a photograph that shows that this is a full-defense property already. We need to document that on red line so that it's understood. We've got two existing sets of stairs. We've got two existing sets of stairs on the property that we're proposing to restore or repair or replace. We're not really sure what the condition is once we start to take them apart.
You're not sure how you're going to replace them?
Right.
With wood? Concrete? Stone?
Stone is what I would prefer, but you haven't gotten there yet. I'm trying to have an answer to that before, but it's, I think it's counted the same here, whether it's winter stone, it's the site coverage. The next photo shows the back of the garage, which is, we're planning to put the pool against the back of the garage, and then we will dispose it, so that it's not something to see or hear. We do have a letter from one of the neighbors expressing, you have very specific concerns. It's a nice letter. They say they have no opposition, but they just want to make sure they're not going to be able to be viewed or sound, and we're very conscious.
What is the distance between the service area and the neighbor?
And the neighbor?
And all the neighbors?
It's about 100 feet. And their house, but it isn't. There are two photos here. The first one is looking south, the next one is looking north, and this is a kind of open area that's in the backyard that you can't see until you walk through all the trees. The planting around the property is so dense that, you know, you realize that this little kind of oasis is in there, and that's where we're proposing to put the pool. There are two small trees that we'd be taking down for it, but our intent is to leave all the rest of the landscaping in place, all the other trees in place. And then we've got some photographs that show views, definitely looking towards the neighbor from the area of the pool. All that landscaping on the existing property is all scheduled to remain. And then we've got a couple of photos that show from the neighbor's driveway what the planting along the property line is.
The fence is behind.
Behind, it's another 20 feet behind that, yeah. So, yeah, we've got quite a bit of distance and foliage. One of the things I'm going to request is if the neighbor would allow us to take, go up to their house and actually see. You know, we're looking from the driveway, which might be, you can't see anything because it's so dense, but I don't know that from their house, they might be high enough up that they're looking and seeing, so I want to just confirm that. And obviously, if we're, the, the, the power wants privacy in that area as much as the neighbors want it, we'll not be looking at their pool, so we'll make sure that we're addressing that landscaping. I think this is a little bit different than our normal landscaping out there here. It's, you know, making sure that we keep as much as we can of what's existing, augmenting that. It's almost hard to find, you know, find a place to put another bush. I might can leave those if you want, just so there's...
What?
Okay.
Is the one foot coping high enough? Because that's at the bottom of the hill. Cut off any drainage going into the pool?
We're going to need to do a little bit of refinement, but we do show how that works. What we're basically proposing to do is just enough regrading in here so that the water wants to go around the pool instead of towards the pool, and, and have the coping, you know, be something that, that controls that. And, you know, still, you know, obviously, this is a big hillside. We don't want to create, we don't want the pool to be damp either, so we want the water to get around it. I think that's pretty much the scope of what we're dealing with here, and I, you know, I'm assuming that we need to address those issues in Hans, and once we've got that resolved, that's when we'd be able to go to the ZBA.
Unless I missed it, I didn't find what the pool equipment consists of, chlorine, salt?
It's salt, it's not the chlorine, and what we, we have a whole package that's coming to us from the pool fabricator. So what we'll be doing is including their stuff with our submission, so you've got all their equipment, you know what it is.
Do you know if it's a backwash system or a...
Saltwater doesn't have a backwash.
Yeah, so again, my...
To throw away the concrete type system.
So I'm, I'm, I don't even want to hypothesize. You said we're talking something about a certain, so I don't want to do that right now. I want to get the package from the pool fabricators and be able to know what that is and submit that. And one of the things, you know, not knowing that, we haven't yet, you know, one of the most important aspects here is how we're dealing with the pool water if we're going to have...
Next one.
Yeah, so we need, we have not compressed that yet. Once I know a little bit better, you know, somebody tells me it's salt and then I get it, it's chlorine, I have to deal with it a totally different way, so our goal is to do it right.
Also, Patty, you have on the drawings, you have 30, 4-inch tree, tree, tree. Could you tell us what kind of trees they are?
Can I? Probably not. Can landscape architect?
Yes, the landscape architect, please.
Yeah, I mean, we have some of them.
And the screening?
Yeah.
It's not shown on how the drawings...
Yeah, we, we showed out all the trees, I think, down to six inch, and we do have most of their, I mean, we've got a 20-inch tree. You know, obviously, we want to find out what it is.
So in the condition that they're in?
Yeah, so we, you know, I think having a arborist go through and help us with that is a good idea. And then what we'll do is, I mean, it's so dense, it's kind of hard to go ahead and say, well, there's a holly here and some rhododendron over there, but what we'll do is we'll get as much of that information as we can. The main thing is that it's, it's like a, it's a dense, dense building, so it's not like some shrubs. It's like you could, you would not be able to get through it.
Okay. Also, there's something else. Would it be possible to move this pool up a little farther, closer to the house?
We can look at that. I've got some nice trees here, and I didn't want to get too close to them, so I was kind of trying to find that spot that fits, you know, if you notice, I've got the eight-inch holly, another eight-inch holly, and then I've got the cedar and the pine up here. I've kind of positioned it in the middle, but that's another question I can get help with from the arborist, because with an eight-inch holly, we could probably get much closer than where I'm showing this, so we can do that. The other thing, I was there today walking around, and I think we're probably also going to want to shift this a little bit more to the north, because these trees down here are so tall. I want it to be effectively in the sun, so we might shift this up another 10 feet or so, but we'll get that nailed down exactly, you know, with the next submission.
Is that closer to the neighborhood?
No, that, I mean, it's closer to the, it was driveway, but the neighbor's house and scale is up here. So, and this also, this is incredibly dense, so right now, you know, we're probably maybe 60 feet from the terrace to the fence line, so if we move, if we made that 50 feet to 60, I don't think...
You're not going to move the utility package?
No, the utility, the utility would stay here against the back of the house, because I think that's, I mean, first of all, it's a really convenient place to put it. It's not out in the woods someplace. You've got to try and find it and get, work on it, you'll be able to surface it properly. And, you know, we've just shown this, the connections coming between the two hollies. We can move this pretty well without having to affect where that gets, how that gets connected. Yeah, don't run the heights around the pool. It's the middle of the pool or towards the end of the pool front, it doesn't...
You also have two different kinds of fences here. One is a chain link and one is a wire.
Correct.
Either of them might be replaced and just...
At this point, they're all staying, every, the property is totally fenced from this corner all the way around, coming back down to here, and then I guess it kind of jogs up in this and comes, you know, all the way down to here and then back up, so to this corner. So the full front of this is metal fencing. It's a, it's a lightweight, but relatively...
Like the first picture.
Yeah, the first picture. Everything from back here is that kind of wire fence, which is actually pretty nice because you don't see it.
Is it chain link or wire?
It's wire.
Doesn't mean to stay built and covered or...
Well, I think, right. Hard to get through it.
Irrelevant. Leaving a long house also, please, we have a automatic cover.
Yep. An automatic cover that can support a minimum of 200 pounds.
We should get that in there.
No, Doug did a good job in reviewing and, you know, identified all the things we need to mention when we're on the road.
I'm just concerned about the noise level because it seems to be close enough to neighbors, even though you have...
Well, we need to do that.
帘 screening.
Yeah, the same thing that you were just talking about with the previous application. We need to show the neighbor here. We need to show what the other houses are, what the distances are between them. I think that's going to be our best, I don't want to say this fence, because hopefully it'll be, but our best justification that what we're doing is not intrusive to the neighbors, so that even though we're increasing our site coverage, it won't be something that's a journalist to the community.
Okay, I'm very concerned about this wire fence. I think now what we call them are deer fences. Is that the same thing?
This is a pretty substantial fence.
It didn't look very substantial in the picture.
Yeah, well, Mr. Maron, would you be...
There's a, there's a specific specification of load this way and this way, and a wire fence without a top rail will not pass.
Okay.
Simple.
So we might have to modify these as a fence? And we would do that.
Replace it.
Replace it.
Modify it. Modify and hope, but we'll see. We'll do whatever is necessary to be compliant and, you know, get down to the screening or modifying the fence.
Sorry.
You know, you told me it's so dense you can't get the fence.
I think that's a reason I would like to leave it as it is, but I understand why you did that.
Keeping in mind, we're only fencing the pool, not the whole property, so a new fence around the pool maybe.
I'd love to keep it the property so that you're not seeing another fence out here. Yeah, but we'll make sure we have something that is suitable and appropriate and meets well, and it's trying to...
So is that the only place that the fence, that they're sorry, that the pool could go?
Basically, if you look, if you walk the property, you've got this one clearing up here, which is really, you know, it's, you can't see it even through the house, so it's not, you know, it's a good use for that area.
Okay.
And, you know, I certainly wouldn't want it anywhere on this side, and so kind of floating it in, I think Sheila's comment about being able to slide it down a little bit, you know, getting it so it kind of floats in this back area, I think is, you know, away from the property lines and, you know, screened and something, you know, people could be sitting outside playing, and you wouldn't be disturbed by it.
Well, you know what you have to do.
I do.
Any comments from the public? Yes.
I think the access...
Come up and speak at the microphone.
Jandler, Irvington, VCB. Our comment was, the access is from the neighbor's driveway?
Correct.
Okay, that was one, that was our concern, and the other concern was drainage, and I know you said it's a saltwater pool and you don't have to backwash, but if you have to acid wash the pool and drain the water...
You have to have someplace for the water.
What happens to the water?
Yeah, oh, no, we'll have to have a solution for that. I don't know if we would be doing something, I mean, I've, we've done it before where we're actually having a truck come in and we pump it out. That's usually the one that doesn't have, yeah, we don't have to worry about what happens downstream when we do that. Of course, there's someplace that's being empty that's having a different problem, but that, we still need to get that resolved. Until I know exactly how this pool is being done, I can't really answer it.
And I guess Hans is addressing the drainage issues on the property as far as the...
And also the construction access, so both of your questions are included in Hans' memo, so they'll be followed.
Do you have a copy of that?
I don't have his comments, so we don't think they're...
Do you want one?
Yeah. Well...
Then I'll go home and watch the game, thank you.
Oh, score.
Oh, I was going to leave that for the next week, I wasn't going to...
For next month.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Patty, do you have the... Oh, yeah, Jeff, will you see him on?
No, no, don't be grateful. Have you seen the... Not yet.
It's not...
It's a corporate...
In Hans.
The next item is 2016-30, Evan and Allison Barth, 11 Beechwood Road.
Evening, Steve Buscini.
Get the microphones.
Of course, I want to... Steve Buscini, the architect, Evan and Allison Barth, 11 Beechwood Road. We're here for the board to review the site plan review in order to demolish the existing deck, wood deck in the back of the house. It's about 230 square feet. It had dilapidated stairs or fallen apart, so the boards need to be replaced, so the proposal was to replace this, then they really started to look at their backyard and they'd like to do something a little bit more to be able to entertain and utilize the backyard for their children and friends. So the proposal is to remove that deck and to build a deck twice as long, still hugging the back of the property with stairs flanking coming out both directions. There's a playground actually right here as well. That's not shown, but it's not, it's a restaying playground, so they'd like to be able to access both sides of the yard. In addition to that, it's this level branch, so this portion of the house will be here to walk out about four or five feet below the main floor level, and right now it walks out onto the grass, and there's, you know, the water, there's liter drains that drain out there, and nobody likes to come in with the grass, which are blown into their carpeted family room in the basement, so they really don't utilize it at all. They're, what they'd like to do is put a patio up there to be able to entertain and to utilize all portions of their house. The reason this deck is extending over to here as well is for an increase in area, but also there's a sliding glass door coming out of a eating area that utilizes their dining room. Then over here, there's a vague window, a vague window. The arrangement of the house coming in from the garage, I suppose it should be a dining room, they have young children, they utilize it as a playroom to keep the children up on the upper floor so they can see them play, and really, they don't use it as a dining room. They would like to be able to access from that play area to the deck as well, which would like to have two exits, the sliding glass doors existing, and over to the vague window, the rear, sliding glass doors as well, just a little hug around the back of the house. The coverage on the house is that the lot size is 20,000 square feet. I'm going to be addressing Hans' number as well, but full disclosure, I see that your coverage percentage that we have over the allowable is not accurate, because based on the fact that the coverage worksheet that we submitted shows the lot size is 22,000 square feet. Lot's 20,000 square feet, 131 by 151 is 20,000 square feet. These zoning tables, I noticed to the neighbors, everything reflects that and is accurate, but there's a one glitch on that coverage worksheet. So the percentages is that Hans had near 4.2% are not accurate, but I have on this plan, no offense to you, it was my fault, but the coverage overage right here is 8% of the allow. 3,200 square feet is 16% of the 20,000 square foot lot area, so at 3,200 square feet, we're currently 2054, the existing, we're at 606 square feet, which brings us to 3,460, which is an 8% variance request over the allowable. The drainage for the patio area, we had not really decided whether it to be paters or an upperdated surface, but in the interim, what I've shown is a swell and two cul-facts would pick up that area. I did not do a perp testing, just a deep test with this, being that there's a variance required. I requested in my narrative that maybe those would be done after the variance request, so I don't dig holes in the backyard for no reason. The other items in Hans' memo, or if we skip to that, is, I mean, there's limited construction and things I will show on that. The tree canopy is actually depicted on here. It's 5.3 radius, it's about 11-foot canopy, which is shown accurate on the plan, and tree protection is shown around there with a detail on the back. The intention is that originally the chamfered corners of the deck was to save that tree. She had an arborist out there looking at the tree, said it's not wrong for this world, but they do like that because it really is the only tree in this backyard here. Everything else is high, 14-foot high, every green shrubs bordering the property, and it is a nice tree that they'd like to utilize for as many years as they can. The intention was to champer that off and limit the disturbance in that drip line. We're proposing only one column, one pier in that drip line, which will be carefully excavated, find an area for roots, put maybe an eight-inch diameter pier in there if we can do it structurally, ten inch, whatever we can fit, just to get that one column within the drip line.
That'll be hand dug?
Yeah, it'll be hand dug, exactly. The other items in the, in the, in the existing plan, in the package, there was a survey submitted, and that actual survey is exactly what the existing plan is. This plan that you have in your package is the existing plan, the existing plan of the backyard. As you can see here, all it is is the deck, the AC lift, and stairs. AC unit, deck, stairs, and then this little playground like I said over there.
And that's the tree you're talking about?
That's the tree, yes.
Which one is the, which one is the tree?
This is the tree. So the proposal is to, like I said, carefully excavate for one pier, and there's a few low lying branches here that will be trimmed up. As you can see, it's a very high canopy, so you're still going to get a lot of use and help out of the tree. Yes?
Oh, sorry, no, no, on the top left.
This is a different picture, I'm going to explain in a second.
Is that the tree?
No, this is everybody, no, that's not, that's the tree. You can see it growing.
Could you just bring that over? I'm having a hard time seeing the tree. Those leaves that are in the foreground there on this, is that...
No, this actually is the neighbor. I'm going to choose...
Okay, this is the tree?
This is the tree.
Okay.
You can see how it, the canopy is right over the edge of the deck. So as this extends into here, a few of these branches will be trimmed up here, but we really want to keep it.
Okay, and then the pier is gonna be somewhere in this area over here?
Correct, correct. Uh, four and a half feet outside of, I'm sorry, this is the view of the backyard showing the screen.
And this is the tree?
No, those are just shrubs.
Sure, okay.
What I wanted to do with these pictures is also to show, I know that the zoning board is more curious, is curious and typically about, uh, character of the neighborhood, precedence in the neighborhood. I also wanted to show you this part. This is the backyard looking out the back, as far as who may see this, no one in the backyard is going to see this, these are fourteen foot high, evergreens very dense. On the other side of the property, uh, you see this hedge line right here, which is mostly deciduous, but there is a very long hedge line around there. So that's bothering the neighbors to the east. But the neighbors to the west are right there, you can see in this picture, that's the sliding glass door coming out of this level family room. That's the neighbor to the east, and that is the deck that they have in their backyard that stands the entire width of their house. So as far as being precedence in the neighborhood or any of the character, I believe it's any character of what's going on there. And then in addition to that, this is the tax map of the area. You'll see that the lot sizes are all about twenty thousand square feet, even the ones behind it, maybe twenty to twenty-two thousand square feet, but they're all comparable size. And you'll see this is our house and the neighboring coverages that are comparable as well. The two adjacent to it may not be the best examples, but right behind it, now here, one lot over, one lot over, they all have comparable coverages and lot and house sizes. So hopefully we're outside of the character. Try to minimize it by chamfering the deck, chamfering the patio. I, I added it about nine percent, I really didn't think that was a good number, it was close to ten, I tried to bring it down to eight, and that's where we ended up.
Any comments, any other comments from any of the board members?
Yes, I like to use the, the swell for the drainage.
Thank you.
Don't see that too often, I wish we see it more often. Any, any idea of selective plantings in here, because there's?
They do want to do something along here, I've got, only here, what I do is I come back, look at your zoning and show you what they have. I think they were actually talking more about movable, excuse me, movable planters, maybe located around there, depending on where they want to put their furniture. Uh, but I'm sure they do want to do something along here as well, I can talk to them.
Any other comments? No? Any, anyone in the public wish to address this matter? No, okay, well, I, I think if the rest of the members of the board are right, I think we can go to the ZVA with this and then get the approval from them and then come back here with the final site plan, with some final site plan approval. Okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Very much your time.
Uh, next item is twenty sixteen dash twenty-nine, Island Fisher, one sixteen and one eighteen Main Street.
Sorry, Phil.
Thanks.
Disney.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Peter Reynolds.
I'll take the microphone.
Peter Reynolds, North River Architecture and Planning, uh, representing the project on one sixteen Main Street, owner's Island Fisher. It's a renovation refurbishment of a nineteenth century frame building. We've, uh, appeared in front of the Architectural Review Board, um, about some other minor issues which are still open regarding historically correct porch railings on the front of the house, color, things like that. Um, we'll go back to them after we get some of these, we realize we have to come back, we have to come to the planning board to pitch our improvement, approve lots of these larger scope items. The central mission of the project is a restoration as much as feasible to upgrade and restore the building. Uh, the building is used as a private residence guest house. Um, what we're coming to you for, uh, are a refurbishment of the front yard, which is essentially a replacement of the existing post-to-post picket fence. Um, there's slight design change with the, instead of two entrances now, one of which is a central main entrance and a side sort of office entrance, which exists now to create two symmetrical openings. So that there's a half circular, sort of semi-circular, uh, design here. So a little more symmetry, a little more period approach to it rather than a major, kind of commercial. Um, that would involve demolition of existing concrete walkway, which is now centered on the building. Sorry, this is small scale for you. Uh, so what you see here in the dark would be a new impermeable limestone path with sub paths, one to the business, for business entrances and one to the back of the lot. So look to aid parking to the back. Um, in addition to which, there's a relooking drainage, essentially upgrade the site drainage, clean up issues that apparently came with the purchase of the property. Uh, removal of some concrete pathways that are in the back of the building here, excuse me, in the back of the building now, just to eliminate them. Add to a little bit of site lighting, path lighting, uh, improve the trash receptacle that's back there, put that on bluestone path. Um, and then with ARD's approval, period railings on the decks, uh, restoration of the existing deck that was on the second floor front. And enlargement of the back deck that is on the east, is on the east corner of the property, which is back here, there's an existing small deck, it's packed to the sixties, doesn't match the building. We would enlarge that slightly, as shown in one period, make the drainage of the post that would match the rest of the house. So the scope again, application to you, even though it involves site relooking, site drainage and a bunch of other small scale items, is essentially these front pathways, enlargement of this deck, path lighting to accommodate that. I think that covers the scope.
They, they, when I looked at the plan, there, there's some inconsistencies on it that maybe you can either correct or, or explain possibly and correct then too. It says here, remove existing hedge, replace, see planting plan. Um, but then on the other side, it says existing hedge, and it doesn't indicate whether you're removing that or leaving that. And then it also doesn't, it doesn't note that, well, what are you gonna, are you, you know, it should note where you're filling in here. Are you leaving, what is it, a boxwood hedge, are you leaving the boxwood hedge there, or are you taking it out and putting an entire new hedge in outside?
Great, okay, apologize for that inconsistency. There will be, there would be a new boxwood hedge along the front of the property, so inside that, the new picket fence.
Okay.
Um, so there's essentially a demolition of existing plantings and replacement in kind along the front of the, we'll clean up that description.
So then are you taking out the entire, the hedge seems to, um, it seems to run along the, the front property line, but then it, it, it seems to run down each side property line for a little bit of distance. Are you removing that entire hedge?
We would have removed that hedge and replaced.
And replace it, okay, okay.
Yeah.
But also at the back, we talked about concrete paths, again, there was an inconsistency here, too, maybe can explain. It says existing dirt path to be removed, but in the same location it says demo all concrete paths at south of the house. So I think you just need to identify, is there a dirt path back there, is it all concrete? I mean, because that will go into coverage calculation.
Got it, it should, and it'll be removal of all concrete would be removed. Uh, I will clean up that discrepancy for you, apologize about that.
All right. All right. That was the comments I had, any comments from any of the board members?
Is there any intended change of use?
No.
Any other comments?
No.
Yes.
Just, um, spend a little more time on the landscape plan because they were, they were replacing the, uh, some of the shrubs on the east side. Yes, of Monday. And here it says existing, so they've been replaced, if you can get them corrected, sure. And my concern is the decomposed crushed granite, is that being used just in the lowest speed? The side of the building to the curb line, and it's not, is it not gonna carry through? It's gonna be on the front of the building, front only. Front? Yeah. The whole front? Yes. To the. Okay, so that'll be coverage. Yes, and that's calculated as such. The whole front? Yes. Okay. All that's in the calc, all that's in the calculation.
It's not.
I don't see it. Okay, we'll make it so. And then the lighting, we'd like to know if it's dark sky, uh, and if you can show that. Yeah, it will be, it will provide specs. And then, of course, you understand that you stopped it with the ZVA for the aqueduct proper activities. Mm-hmm. Okay. Yep.
Well, I think before we send them to the ZVA, they should make sure that your coverage is okay, yeah, right. Okay.
One more quick thing, too, uh, I don't think I mentioned it on here, but just, uh, wanna know where the overflow's going from the stormwater?
No, we do have, we, this is our first time before this board, so we're trying to learn exactly how the sequence and what's, we need. So we, we submitted what we knew was an incomplete plan. We were advised to bring essentially all our concepts and our intentions to see if there, you know, what the reaction to this board was, and we did get feedback from a consultant, which is great. So we'll respond and fill that out. And that includes drainage plan that'll show, uh, show where we're going with that and consider that an upgrade to what exists now.
You can, uh, call me too, and go over and.
Great, okay.
I think also, I don't know, did you see the comments from Mun's Associates?
Yes.
Oh, you did, okay, so, all right, so then you'll take, you'll address those issues too.
Yes.
All right, any comments from anyone in the public? No?
Love the color.
Uh, you do?
Love the color.
Thank you.
Did you have a question? You, yeah, you're turning around. No, no.
Sorry.
All right, then I think we'll see you in, in next month or so with the revisions, and then we can see where you're at with sending you on to the ZVA, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the last item on the agenda for this evening is twenty sixteen dash oh five, Denardo Capital Corp., thirty forty South Broadway. There was a public hearing. I assume that all the people who are still here are here to make comments or to, to see this presentation? Yes, a nod of heads or no, so I understand. Maybe by a show of hands, all those people who have not been here before for this matter, could you raise your hand?
Just done.
Okay, so one person here. Okay, I think, mm? What I'd like you to do then is, is go through a brief overview presentation of what the project is. Just a second, just a minute, okay? So we'll give you a couple of minutes to set up. I think we're gonna do our thing off the board. Before I finish, I have the notices, the notices that we sent out to seeing you. I should give them to Mary Ann.
Good Sarah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, I'm just the board. Good to see you all, David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zaren Steinmetz, here this evening representing, uh, Denardo Capital Corp., Joe Denardo here with me. Along with Anthony Cuccion, uh, from John Meyer Consulting, JMC, and Richard Pearson also, two of our technical consultants. I'm gonna be very brief and hand it over to Anthony to walk us through this. I'm just going to simply remind the board and the public, we have been working on this project on the former fee site on, uh, Broadway here in Irvington for quite some time. Uh, this began when we came before your board, um, it actually came before the board trustees probably about eighteen months ago and proposed some zoning text amendments to allow this property to be developed, or I should say redeveloped, with multi-family residential housing. Uh, Joe and his design team came up with what we thought was a, a wonderful way to reuse the former fee property, provide, um, some luxury, attractive, uh, multi-family residential housing. And at the same time, be able to provide the village with much needed affordable housing. So we embarked at that time on addressing some of the, um, issues in your zoning ordinance. It allowed us to, uh, introduce a development with twenty-seven residential units. Uh, the McCon stern property, which Anthony will walk us through in a moment, um, contained two affordable units and, uh, four affordable units integrated into the main site itself. Uh, subsequent to securing the text amendments before the board trustees, we came before your board and we have, um, for a period of time now been processing our site development plan application, reviewing a number of planning, zoning, environmental, traffic engineering matters. I'm gonna turn it over to Anthony to walk through the site, site details briefly. Uh, they're all in the record, we've covered this with the board, um, many times. We're also gonna talk about the layout of the units and some of the issues that we addressed most recently. Uh, I would say that we have, um, hopefully answered the questions, not only of the board, but of your professional staff. We've tried to work cooperatively, cooperatively with all of your village professionals, and we look forward tonight to, we'll be forward with final subdivision plan approval and resolution.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Cuccioni, I'm a official principal of the firm, JMC. Like this, they give you the site plan, starting with the existing conditions. Uh, this is a, a map that shows you the existing conditions of the site. The site is outlined in red, consists of two parcels, there's an upper parcel, uh, which, um, is four point six acres and a lower parcel that's one point two acres, for a total of five point eight acres. Uh, property's located between the old Quayne Aqueduct to the west, South Broadway to the east, Gering to the states, lie to the north, and Station Road lies to the south. Uh, you heard Mr. Steinmetz mention the, uh, the Con stern house, that house is here. And the site was preused, you have to buy by this large building, which is the key building, as well as two floor residences to the rear location. Um, property is zone MF, multi-family, a residence zone where the use is a permitted use. The portions of the property to be developed are up in the top, which are relatively flat. There are three slopes along the furniture of the property, along South Broadway, and between the two properties. Um, it's a developable proportion, it's gonna be developed as up on the top, we're, uh, relatively flat. The project, uh, sort of the proposed plan. The, uh, the project poses twenty-seven multi-family, attached one family dwelling units. Uh, they range from two to four units per building and they're arranged in twelve buildings. One of them is the McCon stern building here, which will be adaptively reused to house two affordable units. The additional four affordable units in two floors here, and the rest of the, uh, units are around the perimeter and here, and they are single family ownership, uh, within a lot. The only two that are stacked, the four that are stacked are in this building here, uh, which is the affordable unit. So we have six, fair and affordable housing units and twenty-one market rate, I think, on some of the site. Um, the existing site will be accessed from this location off of, uh, South Broadway, that's the existing driving location. Drive will just be improved to be twenty feet wide, uh, and flattened out a little bit, South Broadway, provide safer connection. And then the units are located, as you see on the loop driveway here, which is one way, as was requested by the board, in a counterclockwise, uh, direction of traffic flow. The units allow attractive architectural designs, will be heavily landscaped. Uh, we've been working with your bank of architectural consulting over the past, uh, number of months to refine the landscaping plan. I think we've come to an agreement with some minor, um, modifications, we'd like to see that, and, uh, I understand it's a forthcoming memo. Uh, we will work with her to, I don't know, those last couple of comments.
Excuse me, did you receive the memo yet? November first, okay, you received that, okay.
Yeah, seemed, uh, she basically said, you know, we can literally couple of monitoring stuff.
I think, yeah, changing some deciduous to evergreens and vice versa, and relocating them to create more of a buffer along the old Quayne Aqueduct railway, I believe was, was one area. And then also, uh, putting some hedges in, some, some low growing evergreens along the.
The rear here.
Yes, and then along the access drive as you head east.
Here.
When you're heading east, yeah, uh, no, so, so that as a car heading east at night, the lights won't shine out into the, yeah, just to the left of where you had the, um, the pointer, right in there, right? I think those were some of the ones that she had.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with any of that, we're gonna look at that. Uh, the one thing I'd like to work with her on is in the rear, uh, not providing too heavy a large screening, because we'd like to take advantage of views to the, to the river for those upper level, your, your upper floors and those.
Right, well, I think, I think she recommended some trees and shrubs that would grow to maximum, let's say, twenty to twenty-five feet in height. And I thi, and I think that, that may be sufficient when you take into account that the aqueduct actually is ten feet lower than your property. So when you're looking up, I think you have, you have it in one of your, one of your cross, one of your profile, yeah, one of your sections there, that as you're looking up. So you, if you have trees that are twenty to twenty-five feet high, it'll still allow your, your residents to, to have views out the top floor. But it'll also provide screening from people that are walking along the aqueducts.
Okay, we will, uh, definitely get together and work on those last couple of issues. Um, at the perimeter site, uh, the tenants have agreed to install a four foot wide concrete sidewalk along Station Road, connecting to the existing sidewalk at South Broadway and then running, uh, to the Aqueduct property near the, the underpass there, along Station Road. In terms of parking, uh, this, the project needs the parking requirement for attached one family dwelling units with, which is a requirement of two spaces per unit. In fact, fifty-four spaces are required, and the project is divided into five. Parking spaces are forty-four garages and sixty-one in the open. And there are nine visitor spaces, we've been working with the board on around the group road. Six perpendicular spaces here and one, two, three parallel spaces along the group road for visitors. In terms of both requirements, we did a site capacity plan, you have a maximum of thirty-one units, and as we said, the project includes twenty-seven units. units, and as we said, the project complies with 27 minutes, so below that threshold. Project complies with the minimum setback requirements. There is a Broadway buffer along the front, there are no units within the Broadway buffer or the aqueduct at the rear of the property, as well as aside yards on, on this property. The plan also complies with a maximum limited building coverage. It's allowed to be 18%, exclusive of buildings that are adapted or reused, and the project itself is 18%, just under 18, but 73.84% coverage. And with an adaptively reused building, it's allowed to go up to 20, and the project is at 18.85 with the use of the McCon stern building, which as I said, will have two affordable units. We've got a extensive stormwater plan, we've got a stormwater pollution prevention plan that we've been working with engineering on, we've got two stormwater management areas, one here on the dering road, and one in the green space on the south side of the site. It's designed according to the requirements of the Department of Environmental Conservation as well as the building of Irvington. The plan assures that there will be a reduction of both rate and the volume runoff from the site under proposed conditions as compared to existing conditions. So in every storm we've analyzed, there will be substantial reduction in the flow and the rate of water from the site.
In all directions?
In all directions.
How, how will the, because I was just looking at the plans today. Again, I noticed you have storm drains that are picking up the drainage from all the buildings and from all the impervious areas. I also noticed in the OCA buffer, how is the drainage being handled in the OCA buffer?
So, in this area here?
Yes.
There's a pretty substantial drainage area right now that goes down, undetained into these properties here. We've made that, that area smaller, and we've taken the impervious surfaces out of that, on top of it, out of the area that goes undetained down to the, along the aqueduct and down towards the brook in this location. So there's substantially less stormwater under proposed conditions than there is now, by both reducing the size of that drainage area and taking the impervious surfaces out of it, just the green space that goes down there now. And the rest of the stormer areas will be captured, and then we go into these detention areas where it'll be detained and infiltrated into the ground. That's the preferred method by the DBC, is that you actually provide infiltration of stormwater, and then there'll be an overflow as, you know, we went through, what area of overflow into the brook. So we had three specific design points that we looked at, different points of the brook, and every one of them individually had a reduction in rate and volume of stormwater, so collectively, it was even larger reduction.
I think Pat was referring to the water that might accumulate between the wall and the back of the buildings, yeah, in there.
Yeah, that's, we, probably within that buffer, or within the majority of that buffer, towards, we'll be not changing the rate of the existing condition is now.
Which is?
Which is landscaping, which is lawn and landscaping. There is a house here now, a building here in the buffer that we're removing.
Where does that existing water go?
It runs down, and then goes, there's a little swell here, and it goes down to the brook here.
And it's gonna continue to do that, but you're saying that there's gonna be less impervious surface in that area. Do you know offhand what frequency storm you're gonna be able to control there, where you're not gonna have any flow off the property?
Well, there was some, but less, and all storms less than under the existing conditions. You're always gonna have some stormwater flowing over land, but we've really reduced the amount of area going undetained there, and like I said, there was parts of houses and driveways and roads that went there also, and we've taken that out, put that into detention system.
Okay, that house that is in the, would be in the southwest corner, no, of the fee property, was that house also draining down towards Station Road?
The existing house that was in the southwest corner?
The existing house, yes, it was going down.
Okay, so that house is being removed, and so that, so then that drainage is not going, is no longer going towards Station Road. It's gonna be captured by the catch basins and be brought to the underground detention basins, and then down to Barney Brook along the...
That's correct. Just from the back of the house, the slope continues to go, but the rest of it we've now redirected and captured.
Can you just answer the question here? Basically kind of explain to the people that don't know the full history, sort of what you showed before you got here? In other words, what did you go through with the, with the plan and with the board of trustees in order for them to make their decision? So it's, it is kind of clear what everyone has seen all the way through.
Yeah, we've done an extensive analysis with the board of trustees.
And did you go back to the site capacity analysis of what have you...
For the site capacity analysis, we went through, and there's a formula there where you determine what the maximum yield should be for the site, and that came up, as I said, with 31 units, plus 27, so we read that. When we did the zoning text amendments, we looked at the other MF zones throughout the village, and actually looked if you were to redevelop them under the new regulations, what would be the impact, and we found that there was no increased impact or no additional development, because virtually all of those MF districts are currently developed well in excess of what's permitted by the current zoning. So we went through all that and identified how the zoning text amendment that was put in place, not only affected this property, but the other properties in the town. We did some extensive visual analysis, we did, as you know, the video back with the village board to give them an idea of what this would look like when you viewed it from both outside and inside of the property, and then we followed up when we came to your board with some more visual analysis.
But even, even, they in spirit saw the density of what you're showing, what you came to us with.
Yeah.
It is, I'm just trying to show that throughout this, that your team has kind of shown what you showed to us and what basically has percolated to now. It isn't really that much different than when that amendment was done.
That's correct.
We just wanna, so everyone else knows that.
The density and the amount of development is virtually identical, and the one thing that your board was interested in was the views from Station Road, which created a green space here, that was here, unless we took the units that were here, moved them into what was a green space here, but other than that, the coverages, the density...
Correct, the bulk is very similar, everyone has been aware of the bulk since day one, since this resolution was, was amended.
Absolutely.
But you did make some architectural changes for better viewing from out to in on all four sides.
We had some piece of moves and add some more penetration architectural...
Take away that barracks slope.
Correct, and Joe is currently before the architectural review board now, and they're looking at the buildings and everything, and I was like...
Do you have any of those slides with you?
That was a positive change as far as...
Thank you.
And Anthony, we also adjusted, didn't we adjust the circulation on site as a result of some planning board suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, it used to be a two-way circulation, we had a two-way road going around, and the request is that we made it one-way circulation, so we're happy to do that. Now it circulates counterclockwise.
And we introduced more visitor parking.
Correct.
Well, yeah, on the parking, explain what's happening on Broadway and what you're doing in the parking lot across the street.
Yeah, so regarding the site distance on South Broadway, the proposal is to remove some on-street parking spaces here along South Broadway.
Excuse me, why don't you go back to the area?
Yeah. So right here, you see these on-street parking spaces, proposal is, right now, what's on the table is removing five of those spaces, as was worked out with your traffic itself in the KRF, and in replacement of those, at the field point parking lot, proposing to re-strike that and widen that parking lot a bit to provide an additional six parking spaces in there. So we're replacing the five that are getting removed here, plus one for a total of six in that field point parking lot. Requires lining it towards Broadway about two and a half feet, and then lining it towards the woods, towards the field point property, and creating a retaining there to gain some
Also, what are you doing about the wall that runs along the old Coen aqueduct? There's some questions about that.
Yeah, so that wall will essentially remain, be cleaned up, take the vegetation off of it, and just clean up that wall. In this location, it's kind of a stone wall, and the idea would be to rebuild that stone wall, put a fence into it above from the stone up, to make it pass the same height as the existing brick wall.
What about the existing chain link fence?
Ever. Also proposing a similar fence along the north property line here.
Similar to what?
Similar to what will be put in, help with the stone walls.
And then just also describe what would be the, the access to the old Coen aqueduct from the property and also to Broadway, sort of the sidewalks and the pathways that are being put in.
Sure, so the old Coen aqueduct, there's, right now, there's a gate here in this location, a gate, which is, a new, better gate would be put in, proposing a mulch path to bring people out to the old Coen aqueduct, because it's nice to be able to have that as amenity for the property, it gets people into town on foot. As well, we have a sidewalk along this portion of the roadway coming down here, and a sidewalk coming down the side of the driveway and connecting to the existing sidewalk at South Broadway.
How is the mulch pathway gonna be maintained in the winter? We've had, I've had some experience, and our lawyers say, if you have a pathway, you have to maintain it, otherwise somebody will fall on it and...
Yeah, it would be shovel, but you'd have to look out for your shovel, most of China, you know, we're up against a pervious and a building coverage requirement, so we don't want mulch as a broker in that location.
The Ed Franklin.
Ed Franklin, Mark, it's out in the front here, that would be remained just the way it is.
Don't tell anyone where it is.
No.
How we have to pluck it?
I keep looking for it.
Because it's like a sandstone.
Joe, I can't like...
Probably does. At least I sandstone a number of cars.
Download.
Yeah, ready.
I walked by all the time, and I laughed, but I just, you know...
With the benches?
I don't wanna stop and look, because then someone could say, "Ah, there it is."
With the benches, go to the second telephone pole, 40 feet.
Oh.
Just put a sticker, "George, here it is."
It's cleared out now, so we have to see, it's because of historical... You gotta go to the federal's papers, and then you can get a little map.
If you get me tickets to Hamilton, I'll check it out.
I think also describe the topography of the site, because there's some issue, some question about why the units have been located where they're located, and if maybe you can describe the open space areas, what the topography is, particularly in the open space areas that's opposed to where the units are being placed.
Yeah, you can see the contour lines here, this, as I said, this area up here, you see very few contours, that's a relatively flat area. It does, that is higher, it's about the same elevation as your old Coen aqueduct, maybe just a few feet higher than your old Coen aqueduct roadway, and then there's a slope in this location that slopes down, probably to 30 to 40 feet from the site, down to South Broadway, and as I said, along this property line, there's a slope about 40 to 50 feet from the property above, down to the property below. So we've avoided those areas for development and maintained a large buffer. This site almost essentially can be, stays an open space, a natural open space, as well as a buffer along Broadway, will be cleaned up, we've been working with Ms. Muns to fill the plan removal of the invasive species, clean out the vines, clean up the area, and then replant it with a new buffer revitalization plan that will be sold by dollars and then maintained for a three-year period.
And then also, I think you can show on this particular plant too, you show the OCA setback, why don't you explain those two buildings that are in there that are gonna be removed, and where the new buildings should be located in relation to that setback?
Sure, that actually applies to both setbacks. So there's a building here, which is a house, and another barn that goes with it in the back here, they'll both be removed. This yellow line is the old Coen aqueduct buffer, and this yellow line is the Broadway buffer, so these encumbrances, or these structures inside the buffer will be removed. Also, the fee building, which is the large building here, this portion of fee building will be removed, that actually extends into the buffer right now.
The other construction will be behind those yellow lines.
That's correct, all the buildings will be behind the lines. Portion of the driveway is now in the buffer, now will continue to be in the buffer portion of the upper driveway, but other than that, those structures.
And then along the old Coen aqueduct buffer, your property ends at the wall.
Correct.
Correct? So you're not touching anything that is beyond the wall?
That's correct.
All the trees that are beyond that wall stay there? The trees in the upper right-hand corner, yes, yep, will be the northwest corner of the site, will remain there?
That's correct.
Any other questions or any comments from any of the board members? Doug or Ed, any questions or comments? I think at this point, then we'll open up to the public.
Hey, did you say in the record this is a public's time?
Yes, I did. Ms. Eisler? I take them, excuse me, Ms. Eisler, take the microphone and state your name.
I have quick voice, but I'll just... It seems to me we've had all the emphasis on the large units, which I find agree. I'm more concerned about the McCon stern area, because our house is exactly adjacent to that. Now, the drainage was discussed, and you pointed the flow off to the brook going directly down, and the way you traced it goes through my house. Now, I need some clarification and assurance that the drainage will not go through my house, but will avoid it regardless of what storm situations we may have. It is my greatest concern, that this. We have had water occasionally run off in major storms, I cannot imagine it could be any less as a result of these buildings above us. You have said, I think, that you will examine that and make sure that it will not go through my house, which I would be grateful for knowing.
It's been reviewed by our village engineer.
And?
And from the conversation that's had here today, I have reviewed, they're drastically reducing the concentrator flow that goes into the stream of your property.
As a result of what the village is doing?
Yes. By taking, without a, I'll let Doug explain to you, but...
In short, they're taking the entire area that currently goes toward your house and reducing it by about two-thirds.
But tell her how.
So they're, they're...
It's still going direction of my house.
No, it's not, it heads towards Broadway.
Yeah, sure.
Explain something.
My next question deals with the McCon stern property, which is exactly adjacent to my house. I gather you will put two affordable units within that relatively small house, which I can't quite imagine, but I wouldn't wish that somebody else will. My other question is, I think it's been said about the large lawn area, what will happen to that? Will it be changed? Will it be changed in some way? I haven't heard anything about that.
Well, as you can see, the house is shown there, the McCon stern house is shown there, and the, the parking area is also shown in the gray, right west of the, the house, and that is substantially less than what is there now in terms of paved space. Maybe, Anthony, you can show, or you can maybe flip to the existing conditions and
So you can see, the footprint of the McCon stern house will stay precisely as it is now, there's an existing driveway now, you might be able to see the lines there, and it goes back into here, and there's that little patio area back here, patio. All this driveway and this patio area will all be removed, and it'll be cut back to here, so that just provides those four spaces for these units here, and all the rest of this driveway would be removed. Yes, it actually reduced the amount of impervious surface that contributes runoff in near direction or towards the brook.
Okay, what happens to that large lawn?
It's gonna stay as it is, that area?
It will not be changed, nothing is gonna be built on it?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
It'll remain just as it is, the only thing is the portion of the driveway will be ripped up, and that'll be, come along. You have a little more green here.
And these people coming out of two units will have that garage space there, and they will have this one driveway that goes up to...
Correct, this driveway will remain, and they'll have a little dead end, so we'll cut the pavement that goes back here, will get cut off, we'll have these four parking spaces right here, and then those come in and out of the existing driveway there.
So there's no garage?
There's no garage under there, but it doesn't really function as a garage, there's sort of a very low head garage under the area. You keep that as a garage?
The doorway for storage.
Storage.
The units will not have enough storage.
Thank you. The two most important things that my mother and I are concerned about are basically the water, so I gather you're saying more of it will come down in a different direction, so there will be less coming down from that side. The other thing, the other thing is, these buildings are up on top of us. How do we know that we're not going to have, we have huge trees in between, that all of that will be studied so that nothing on that property or on our property as a result of building will topple down on our house? How is all of that going to be studied so that we can be assured we don't have to worry about that?
Yeah, the, the trees that are in that slope area between your house and the back would basically remain as they are on that slope, there's a specific tree that you're concerned about? I've been back to it.
It's a bunch of very big trees, some on our property.
Top, 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 you have to use the microphone for the transcriber.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay. Sorry. The question is, some of the trees, I think, are on our property, some of them are on the other property. The concern is building on your property that would cause the earth to move, that would cause trees to come down. We have trees, you know, a couple hundred feet tall, that would not be pleasant.
Well, absolutely agree, that's...
So how are we guaranteed that that can't happen? That's what I wanna know.
The dollars are very experienced builders, they've done this many times, none of those trees that would be affected are close enough to be able to fall on your house, you can see how far the buildings are, the proposed building from your building.
Where's the property line, the red one?
The red line there, and, you know, there's no.
None of those things could.
Your property will not be impacted or touched, we live and come close to your properties, even the trees going up the slope.
Earth falling, that doesn't happen, you're saying, it can't come close enough?
We're not building in the slopes, we're staying up from the slope where it flattens out.
And how far back from the slope is the building going on, did you say fifty feet?
Yeah, I'm sure that, but it's probably about fifty feet from the property line, and about another eighty feet to your house, you're probably looking at a hundred and thirty feet between the buildings, in rough numbers.
Where the building is taking, the closest part the building is taking place is like a hundred and thirty feet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just to help out, the foundation of the structure nearest this house, the foundation construction is not in the drip zone or the roots of that tree, I would imagine.
No, that's correct.
So the roots are safe.
Yeah, we're pretty confident that.
It's not because of the building.
Okay, you don't have the site plan that shows the limit of disturbance?
Yeah, I've got you.
Yeah, the profile that shows.
There's a section.
Anthony, maybe you can describe here on this section.
Hundred and twenty feet. So, well, I mean, the section's cut down through here, it's not the exact same location, you're looking for something up here, but same situation, you see where the slope is, and then it flattens out before you get to the building?
Uh-huh.
And this, and these are walkout basements, so there's not a lot of excavation going on where these basements are, they're built very close to the existing grade, and then, because as you know, it's a three-story profile on this side and a two-story profile on the north side, so there's very little earthwork going on in this location due to the fact that the basements are walkout basements in the back, meaning they're at grade, you walk out to the existing grade out of the back.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other comments, questions? Yes, ma'am, would you come up and take the microphone? Just state your name and address, please.
Thank you, my name is Eleanor Alcorn, I live at thirty-nine Daffery Park, which is just opposite this site, on the other side of the Crotin Aqueduct, I have a couple of questions, actually, is it possible to see a site plan and a cross-section from the other angle, just like the one you showed, but showing the aqueduct elevation, right? So that's South Broadway and that's the aqueduct?
Yes, they're on the left.
So, I'm very concerned that the planting plan for the Crotin Aqueduct side is so sparse, I appreciate that the developers want the residents to have river views, the height of those structures is how high?
Thirty-five foot maximum.
But there's a whole row of houses currently just exactly opposite them, and so our privacy is important to us, and we're strongly hoping that that planting could be increased to keep our privacy now, so that we don't have a row of houses peering into our backyards and into our bedrooms, so that's one comment I'd like to make, and similarly, I'm hoping very much that the developers will agree that the, whatever exterior lighting there is, will be very carefully calibrated not to shine into our backyards, because it's delightfully peaceful and quiet there now, and we'd really like to preserve that quality. And those are my major concerns.
Okay, let me just, for you, this is the report submitted by our, the planning board's landscape architect consultant, which she has specifically talked about the OCA buffer area, she said the area along the OCA could use more screening, I would recommend groupings of evergreen shrubs and small trees like amaranth here, screening does not need to be high because the OCA is lower in elevation, I would add in some canopy trees near the units and place shrubs on proposed slope, so I think she's already looking at that, and that will be added, and I think what she's saying is, if you see on the left where the person is, you see how the line slopes up, I was just out there till this afternoon to take a walk down there, the OCA is probably about eight to ten feet actually below the grade of the fee property, so you're actually looking up at the wall, and then, so if you have trees that are even ten, I'm sorry, not ten, but if you say they're twenty to twenty-five feet tall, which while you're looking up at them, they then change the view that you have of the buildings, you're not, it would be different if you were at a higher elevation on the OCA and looking into the property or looking down at the property, then you'd see all the building, so with, even with shorter trees, you still will have a screening effect that will screen your properties along, on the other side of the OCA, and will also screen for people who are walking along the OCA.
I think she's worried, she's more concerned about bedroom to bedroom.
Thank you.
Yeah, when I was out there today, I noticed that a number of the houses are actually, you all seem to have fences along the OCA, and then some of the houses were actually didn't even reach the height of the fence in their backyard, so I don't see that that's going to be that issue, if that is, you're going to have that much.
Well, it's a thirty-foot-high structure, which is, you know, considerably higher than what we're looking at right now, I don't, uh.
I think they're also going to be set, those units are going to be set back farther than the building that is out there now, that building that's out there now is actually in the buffer area.
Of course, of course, and the other concern I have, I expressed in my message to you about the lighting, and a general concern about the distribution of the density, which...
Well, a couple of things, maybe either Mr. DiNardo or Mr. Guccione can talk about the lighting, the location of the streetlights on the drive, and then also what type of lighting will be on the back of the residence, which will be looking out towards the OCA.
If there are decks in the back, you know, if you're lighting on those, I think could be, could really be bright for those of us on the other side of the aqueduct, and also finally, the wall that's back there now that you referred to, that would be sort of attached together with a wood fence, presumably replacing the chain link fence, perhaps that could be unified in a more substantial way that would give us some privacy and make the back of the property a sort of coherent whole.
Lights, we've submitted a nice deluxe plan to the village, it shows, we have about ten lighting fixtures, they're very residential in scale and feel, the nice deluxe plan shows that there is no spill at the property line, the lights will be dark sky compliant, LED fixtures, very modern, and it's not anticipated there to be any spill beyond the limits of the property, it's really, and there is going to be a low level, security lighting level in evening at night after eleven to twelve o'clock, so that really should not be any impact there.
How about lighting off the back of the units themselves?
Typically, there is a light over the deck, any door is required to have a light over it, so but still, fixtures, you know, they're going to be sixty watt fixtures just to provide a little bit of light.
It's going to be on the first, it's on the first floor too.
It's on the first floor, that deck is, I mean, that wall would pretty much screen those few people, maybe not on the second floor, but on the first floor, looking in from the old Crotin Aqueduct.
Do you have a second floor deck?
No, not there. Only place you have a second floor deck is on the affordable units that have the two levels.
Okay. So then, the only thing that's lighting off the back of the units facing the OCA is the light emanating from the windows themselves, and then a light that would be at the first floor level for the small patio area that's out the back of those units.
Brick wall is higher than, the brick wall is higher than those doorways.
Right.
That's already there.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Can I, is there going to be lighting on the road that goes around, is there going to be?
Yes, that's where the deck lights are.
Okay.
Around the green roof, but there's interior of the buildings, the interior of the buildings, so lighting.
No, I think they're on your site plan.
There's light space around the road there, there's nothing on the perimeter up here, is that what you were asking?
No, right, no, I was asking if there was light on the road going around on the inside, not on the outside, so that it's for visual, for at least for driving, so you don't.
Correct, just for safety.
Right.
Any other comments, questions? No? Then I think at this point, any comments, questions from the board? Then I think at this point then we'll close the public hearing. Do we need a motion to do that?
Second.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this point. I think we're tempted to address all the questions that have been raised, both by members of the board and by the members of the public, at this point I'd like to move towards a resolution to adopt or to accept the site plan and the subdivision plan, and Marion, do you?
Yeah, I grabbed something, first though, let me, here, we just got, because the county just.
You need a microphone, Marion?
They signed off, but said they were. Yeah, I'm just handing this.
Introduce yourself too, some people don't know who you are.
Okay, yeah, where I handed out was just the latest subdivision, that's just the subdivision plan, it just changed a little bit before the numbering is changed, and two notes were added that the county helped the program on it, and also, so who wants? I made a few, about eight copies, okay, who wants copies of the resolution to walk through it?
You'll share one.
Oh, maybe some people out here, at least here. People from the public, I have a few ready, so you might have to share. And one more? I should sell them. All right, it's going to be tedious, but I think we've got to.
Talk through it all.
Work through this, to make, you know, so everybody can see that everything's covered in the copy everyone's, okay, on December, whereas on December seventh, oh, the other thing, board members, at any point, you want to stop me, stop me, if you want me to write something, you know. On December seventh, the Irvington Board of Trustees amended the zoning code to permit attached single-family dwellings in the multifamily zoning district, and to modify the coverage, so it's now a maximum coverage of eighteen percent, plus a bonus of up to two percent for the adaptive reuse of a building of local historical significance, and also modified the building separation to fifteen feet and parking requirements, two for each one family dwelling, for attached single-family dwellings. On January twentieth, DiNardo Capital Corp applied to the, well, January twentieth, twenty sixteen, DiNardo Capital Corp applied to the planning board for site plan and subdivision approval of a twenty-seven unit townhouse development at thirty forty South Broadway, which is located in the village's multifamily residence district and view preservation overlay district in accordance with the zoning code's recently amended MF regulations. DiNardo Capital Corp owns a four-point-six-three acre parcel at thirty South Broadway, the former site of the Foundation for Economic Education, and was a contract vendee of the, it still is, I say was because that was at the time of the application, was a contract vendee of the adjoining one-point-one-five acre parcel at forty South Broadway, the location of a one-family house, the gross site area of the combined parcels thirty and forty South Broadway is five-point-seven acres, or two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand eight-hundred-and-thirteen square feet, which, when the resource protection calculation was applied, resulted in a site capacity of thirty-one dwelling units, the western border of the site lies in the fifty-foot aqueduct buffer, and the eastern border of the site lies in that one-hundred-and-twenty-five foot Broadway buffer, this is an editorial, the applicant indicated that there's, none of their buildings are in the buffer, there's nothing in the buffer, originally, there were some drainage structures and other things in the buffer, and the planning board insisted that they be removed, so the plan is that there's now, there's nothing in the buffer, whereas a portion of Barney Brook lies in the southern portion of the site, thus requiring water bodies and water courses, wetlands, and floodplain development permits, the applicant submitted applications for all these permits, six of the twenty-seven dwelling units would be affordable units that meet the fair and affordable housing requirements.
Excuse me, Marion, you said they were submitted, what I issued?
They'll do it tonight.
Oh, okay.
Part of the presentation. The, six of the twenty-seven dwelling units would be affordable units, okay, the existing buildings on the thirty South Broadway site would be torn down, but the house of forty South Broadway, known as the McConster House, would be retained and adaptively reused as two affordable residential units. The next, whereas is pertaining to planning board review, the planning board first considered the application at its February third meeting and expressed concerns about the visual MPX from Station Road, location of drainage basins in the Broadway and Aqueduct buffers, fire truck access, internal roadway size, removal of parking spaces on Broadway, and the inadequacy of information about the trees being removed, which concerns were summarized in a memo to the applicant on March fourth. At the April sixth, twenty sixteen meeting, the plans were revised and re-submitted, these plans removed the stormwater management systems from the Broadway and Aqueduct buffers, but did not include the visual analysis requested by the planning board, at the April sixth meeting, the planning board again stated its concerns about fire truck access and the visual impact of two one-hundred-foot buildings separated by only twenty feet at the southern portion of the property facing Broadway and Station Road. The applicant submitted for the May fourth meeting a revised fire truck access plan, a visual analysis, and two alternative site layout plans to address the planning board's concern about massing, at the May fourth meeting, the planning board discussed its preferred layout and suggested that more visitor parking spaces be provided. At the June first meeting, the applicant presented the site plan with the planning board's preferred layout, showed a visual analysis video of the proposed development, agreed that the internal roadway would be one-way, and provided additional visitor parking spaces. At the June first meeting, the planning board requested that the architecture of the buildings, particularly at the roof level, be varied so as not to appear so massive. A duly noticed public hearing on the subdivision and site plan application was held on July sixth, twenty sixteen, at which the late's site plan was presented, the applicant's traffic engineer and the village's traffic consultant spoke, and members of the public were heard. On this note, I also, it's not in the resolution, but while the public hearing was open on, first opened on July sixth, there was a public meeting on this starting in February, and the public did participate at all, at the meetings it was on, which were most of the meetings between February and July. The planning board requested that the applicant construct a sidewalk along the southern border of the site along Station Road from Broadway to the property line of the old Crotin Aqueduct State Park, and the applicant modified his plans to exclude such sidewalk. The planning board continued the public hearing on August third, the planning board conducted a sidewalk on August eighteenth to discuss the proposed route of the sidewalk along Station Road, and to review the tree removal and drainage work proposed in the Broadway buffer. The planning board continued the public hearing at its September sixth meeting, closed the public hearing, completed its review under SEGRA, and granted preliminary subdivision approval of the site into twenty-nine lots, one for each of the twenty-seven dwelling units, one for the internal roadway, and one for the open space on the site, and the planning board reopened the public hearing on the site development plan and final subdivision plan tonight. Then on the ARB preliminary determination, on February twenty-second, the ARB was determined that the McConster House was a building of local historic significance, so it was to exclude the footprint of the house from coverage for purposes of determining the maximum coverage permitted, which is eighteen percent, whereas the total coverage of the proposed development is forty-seven thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-six square feet, or eighteen-point-eight-five percent of the five-point-seven acre lot, which is in compliance with the regulations for attached one-family dwellings in the MF district, and no changes are proposed for the exterior of the McConster House. Compliance with the fair and affordable housing requirements, the fair and affordable housing regulations of the zoning code require that a development of twenty-seven dwellings include at least three affordable units, and that the average size of the affordable units be a minimum of eighty percent of the size of the market rate units, except that the Board of Trustees may permit the units to be smaller, so long as additional affordable units are provided in an amount that would make the total floor area of the affordable units roughly equivalent to eighty percent of the average floor area of the market rate units multiplied by the number of affordable units. of the market rate units multiplied by the number of affordable units required. On April 4th, 2016, the Board of Trustees approved the provision of six affordable housing units ranging in size from twelve-hundred, roughly twelve-hundred to fourteen-hundred square feet because of belief that the goal of providing fair and affordable housing would be better served by providing a greater number of affordable units smaller in size than eighty percent of the roughly twenty-eight-hundred square for the average of the market rate units. The average square footage of the market rate units is projected to be two-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-eight square feet, eighty percent of which is two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-four square feet, and the total square footage of the six affordable units is six-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-three square feet, which exceeds six-thousand-four-hundred-and-two, which is twenty-one-thirty-four multiplied by three. The fair and affordable housing regulations require that the affordable units be distributed among various sizes in the same proportion as all other units in the development unless a different proportion is approved by Board of Trustees as being better suited to the provision of fair and affordable housing. On April 4th, 2016, the Board of Trustees found that a combination of one one-bedroom, four two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom affordable units would be better suited to the provision of fair and affordable housing than all three and four-bedroom units, which are in the market rate buildings. And the Board of Trustees approved the location of two of the affordable units in the McCon Stern House and the other four in a separate structure at thirty South Broadway. Didn't approve the, units, just approved the location of the there. Okay, and the village engineers reviewed, James Hahn Engineering reviewed the submissions and listed a number of issues with them in memorandum dated February 2nd, June 1st, July 12th, and September 9th, 2016. The applicant's plans were revised to address those issues. Hahn Engineering determined, among many other things, that under the stormwater pollution prevention plan submitted as part of the application, there will be no additional stormwater runoff from the site and that the stormwater system has been designed in accordance with the New York State Stormwater Design Manual. Hahn in his memorandum of November 1st stated that all the requirements for water bodies and water courses, wetlands, and floodplain permits were met and that all other engineering issues were addressed by Hahn Engineering's satisfaction, except for a few items that would have to be resolved later in the process.
Why is that? What are those, the issues?
Oh, things like that you have to get the DOH sign off, which you can't get into-
The scanner stuff?
Yeah. Okay, then on the landscape review, the Environmental Conservation Board in a letter dated January 31st expressed concern about the effects of increased impervious surface on Barney Brook and about the loss of more than sixty trees, many of which are sizable. Lucille Muntz, the village's landscape consultant, reviewed the application, and then a report dated January 31st listed a number of concerns, including the number of trees proposed for removal and the adequacy of the tree protection plan, proposed replacement plantings and plantings in the bioretention basin. A number of revised landscaping plans were submitted in response to Muntz's comments and subsequent reports from her dated March 31st, May 29th, July 2nd, and September 3rd. Muntz made several site visits to thirty-four South, thirty and forty South Broadway and the village parking lot seven, which will be modified as part of the application. In a report dated November 1st, Muntz stated that the applicant had adequately addressed most of her previous comments, but she still had several recommendations about the selection of plants, relocation of some plants, and extra protection of the sycamore tree.
This is something that I'd like to discuss a little bit, is since it's still sort of open and it is kind of a concern for the neighbors, wouldn't it be best before this resolution's signed that that gets resolved?
Well, what, you see that one of the conditions is that they have to respond to Lucille's memo and she has to approve it, and they can't get the building permit until she does.
Right now, it's usually done subject to, but I think that if it's done so that, I assume that there, you actually brought up that you had some concerns with what she wants. What I think makes a lot of sense for this board is to understand, that's what the consultant wants, and if there's any negotiating between you and the consultant, that then the board should know about it as well. If you can do what she wants to do, as is, and we're good with that, then there's no issue. And the only thing I recommend is if we're not gonna do that, if there is something else, that it could be said that this resolution's okay, but come up with a date, like within seven days, you'll have a plan, and if it does change, that this board has to see it. And if it doesn't, you're good to go. I'm not trying to hold it up, I'm trying to make it so that everyone does what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, I've seen it, we can agree to the items in our memo. They were very minor in nature, you know, the vast majority of things were addressed, there's just some moving and substitutions of shrubs and the bit in the quote aqueduct, and we can agree to that stuff in our memo.
So George, actually, Lucille called a couple of days ago and said, should we meet with them, and they changed the plans, but then you're dealing with a moving target. So Lucille did meet at the pre-planning board meeting with us, and the changes are just like different kinds of plants, moving plants, so there's no disagreement on the number of trees or anything like that, just the types. They weren't big, and if they'll say, they'll do everything she says in her memo, and then they won't, they can't get their building permit until they do it and she says it's okay.
Well, can we just add in though that, you know, the applicant agrees to do that, and if there is any change to what is being recommended in Muntz's plan, that they will have to come back to this board for their approval, for any change to that.
That's why if you do it this way, if you say, okay, you agree, and you do actually agree, then you're done, because you already have the paperwork. If in seven days, you don't, and there's a change, you still have the approval pending, everyone on this board says what your changes are, are minor, and you're good. Is that your name?
Okay.
It's tied, by the way.
Must be one-one.
One-one, who?
All right, tied at what?
One-one.
One-one, okay. Traffic and parking review. The applicant's original submission included a traffic study, which on March 7th, the planning board asked AKREF's traffic consultant to review. AKREF reviewed the traffic study and in a memorandum dated April 6th requested additional information clarification. The traffic study was revised and reviewed by AKREF, which continued to have issues which it listed. In a memorandum dated June 22nd, the New York State Department of Transportation reviewed the site plan and traffic study, and in an email dated September 1st, 2016, recommended the relocation of a portion of the stone wall and the removal of parking spaces on Broadway in order to achieve the optimal site distance and further review of the time, and it also recommended further review of the timing of signals at Harriman Road and Station Road. In the opinion of AKREF, the village's traffic consultant, five parking spaces would have to be removed to provide a safe site distance. In order to provide public parking to replace the five parking spaces being removed from Broadway, the applicant submitted plans to reconfigure the village-owned parking lot off of Field Point Road to provide six additional parking spaces, which proposal would require first an easement from the Field Point Community Association and second projecting two-and-a-half feet into the landscaped area at the west side of the parking lot. Just to the planning board, on the memo, like, this is a little change from the draft I had sent you before, it said seven additional parking spaces, it's really six, and then the projection is two-point-five feet, not two feet. The reason I have, I thought it was six too, the reason I have seven is your drawing says seven, so you might wanna fix it.
What it says, it says seven are being-
It says a net gain of seven parking spaces.
And there's one being removed when we were asked to break the spaces wider on the other side, so six, seven minus one is six.
Yes, so the net gain is six.
But I think, but I think what also was miscalculated was that there are ten parallel spaces, not nine. That's what it should on here. It said, convert nine parallel spaces into sixteen angled parking spaces, net gain of seven spaces.
Ones remain at the north end.
On which side, because it doesn't look like it here. Oh, I, oh, this, this one?
Correct.
That space is remaining?
Right.
It's difficult to read because it's so, it's so light.
But you know what, that's a conceptual plan, and they're gonna have to have details-
That loss of one here, that loss of one here, net gain of seven here, that's why we have six.
Okay. Right, so that's what, Marion, you're saying that that has to be, the net gain is six, net?
No, so you convert, convert these nine, nine of the ten parallel spaces, we're converting to sixteen angled spaces. In this row, we're getting a net gain of six. And then here it says, wide and angled spaces from eight-point-seven to nine feet, net loss of one. So, you got seven here and one lost here, so it's a net of six.
All right, yeah, I think on the final plan, it'll have to be more- It'll have to be more obvious, Anthony, as to what spaces are remaining.
The Field Point Community Association Board agreed to enter into an easement agreement to permit the reconfiguration of parking lot, and the village Board of Trustees indicated it would approve the removal of the parking spaces on Broadway, the reconfiguration of parking lot seven, and the installation of sidewalks along Station Road. The parking requirement for the proposed development is fifty-four spaces to per unit, but the applicant is providing one-hundred-and-five parking spaces, forty-four on garages, and sixty-one on gray, on the SEACRA process. On February 3rd, the planning board declared its intent to be lead agency under SEACRA for the site plan and subdivision reviews proposed in order of development and circulated no single intent to all involved agencies, none of which objected. The following month, the planning board declared itself lead agency. On September 6th, the planning board went through the long-form environmental assessment form and concluded that development is revised to respond to the concerns of the planning board, the village's engineers, the village's landscape consultants, and the village's traffic consultant, but had no significant adverse environmental impacts and therefore issued a negative declaration under SEACRA. On view preservation, the planning board determined that development will not obstruct the views of the Hudson River from neighboring properties of the adjacent rice and way. On the need for recreational facilities, the planning board has determined that this twenty-seven unit residential development will generate the need for additional recreation facilities, and the planning board is also determined that suitable facilities cannot be properly located on the site. The reason that's in there is you need to make those findings to then impose the recreation fees of the old parking lot. On the subdivision, and there's a couple of changes in here from the draft I sent you because I have more current information. The planning board on September 6th granted preliminary subdivision approval of the site into twenty-nine lots, one for each of the twenty-seven dwelling units, one for the internal roadway, and one for the open space on the site. The plan was revised to include two notes requested by the Westchester County Department of Health. On November 2nd, 2016, the Westchester County Department of Health wrote in an email that the subdivision plan for the Denardo project is acceptable. That doesn't mean it's acceptable, it means they'll accept it once it's approved by this board. Okay. Now therefore be a result, that the planning board grants a wetlands permit, a water bodies and water courses permit, floodplain permit, final subdivision approval of the plan entitled subdivision, and site development plan approval of the subdivision improvements reflected in the drawings entitled subdivision and site plan approval drawings Dunham Hill, and that any subsequent drawings submitted to respond to the conditions of this resolution subject to the following conditions. You didn't add, just say, there's twenty-six conditions. One, all construction, landscaping, and other elements of the development must comply with the drawings listed above, including the notes in the drawings which constitute the site plan, as well as with the stormwater pollution prevention plan and this resolution of approval, any amendment to the site plan must be approved by the planning board. Second, the final subdivision plan must be endorsed by the Westchester County Department of Health. Third, applicant must pay a recreation fee in lieu of car plan. Such fees must be paid prior to receive a certificate of occupancy for each of the first twenty-three dwelling units to be completed. The applicant must receive a highway permit from the New York State Department of Transportation. Fifth, the applicant must execute a stormwater control facility maintenance agreement in accordance with section 224-168 of the Irvington Zoning Code. Sixth, the building department must confirm that the total square footage of the six affordable units is equal to or exceeds the average square footage of the market units multiplied by three. And the reason I've included this condition is we don't have the floor plans, so I don't have to verify them when they apply to the building. The six affordable units must comply with the Westchester County Affordable Housing Program guidelines, and those cover marketing, how long, they have to be kept affordable, affordability has to be indeed restrictions, you know, all those requirements. So, since we don't have to put them in this resolution because they have to observe the county guidelines. The Board of Trustees must approve the removal of five parking spots on Broadway, the reconstruction and restriking of parking lot seven, and the installation of a sidewalk and ride through Station Road. It did already indicate the going to, and I'll have the resolution on it, the next planning, the Board of Trustees made. Nine, the applicant must reconstruct parking lot seven, as shown on the drawing entitled Dunham, this will park the year of number seven, and last date of 10/19, and then need subsequent approved plans. Ten, the items listed in Hahn Engineering's memorandum dated November 1st must be addressed in any revisions approved by Hahn Engineering. Eleven, the items listed in Lucille Muntz's staff report dated November 1st must be addressed in any revisions approved by Lucille Muntz, and then I'll add, any changes from Muntz's report must be approved by the planning board. Twelve, the applicant must submit a final landscape maintenance plan, which must be approved by Lucille Muntz. The applicant must comply with the landscape and Broadway buffer monitoring and maintenance plan submitted by JMC dated August 24th, and that seems to be more of a long-term maintenance plan, and then during construction, applicant must follow the construction mitigation procedures listed in the letter of care of trees dated August 24th, 2016, and those are in the file.
Well, I think, excuse me, just one second, Marion. I think on that landscape and Broadway buffer monitoring maintenance plan, I think that is both, that's both during construction and after construction, if I'm not mistaken. And then I think also, one thing that, one very important item that's gonna have to be changed in there is, you put a minimum eighty-five percent survival rate, right? As I understand it, the village requires a hundred percent survival rate, so everything will have to be replaced if it should die within those three years. All right, so you'll have to make that change.
All right, now fifteen, notwithstanding note seven on site plan drawing SBA. The reason I have that notwithstanding is that that note says, talks about a one-year maintenance on, and our requirement is three. So notwithstanding that note, applicant must post a three-year bond, not a cash bond, a bond, in the amount of about two-hundred thousand dollars, running from the date of the last certificate of occupancy to guarantee the survival of plantings in the Broadway buffer, aqueduct buffer, and all side front and rear yard setbacks required by the Irvington Zoning Code. Sixteen, only organic, globalized fertilizers may be used anywhere on the site. Seventeen, any application of pesticides must be done by a New York State licensed applicator and must comply with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's best management practices currently in effect. Eighteen, no structure or paving of any sort, no storage of materials is permitted in the open space area other than what is shown on the approved site plan. So I think this responds to one of your questions, how do we know the green area's gonna be kept green? Partially that's approved, and it's also a condition that it has to stay open with nothing on. Nineteen, needs to each individual property, including the open space and roadway parcels, shall include a restriction that no additional structures or paving are permitted on the individual lots nor in the open space or roadway areas. The deed shall also include the restrictions of fertilizers and pesticides, the conditions ten and eleven of all. So just the same things we said up there, but just to make sure that the property owners know. Twenty, applicant must enter into a temporary easement agreement with the Field Point Community Association for the reconfiguration of parking lot seven. Again, they've already said that they're amenable to it. An escrow in the amount of five thousand dollars must be maintained for any consultants retained by the village to monitor compliance with the site plan in the conditions of this resolution. Twenty-two, construction trucks and- Twenty-two, construction trucks and heavy equipment may not be brought to or from the site outside the hours of 9:00 AM to 2:30 on days that the Irvington Code permits construction. This isn't the only requirement with the limitations, there's a bunch of them in their construction notes, that 9:00 to 2:30 were the only times that they could have trucks removing earth from the site, but it didn't talk about construction trucks and heavy equipment, so I just included it in here.
And bonds and things like that are, and bonds and things like that are in the construction?
A bond.
Bond, yes.
Which bond?
There'll be a bond, there'll be a bond for the apartment.
And for the, and for the stormwater and things like that, and it's just, no, because it's not going on private property.
They have maintenance, they're required by state law to maintain it, they have a whole bunch of rules. It's pretty complicated.
But for the construction of it, though?
Construction.
Is, you're asking, George, if there's a bond for the construction?
What happens if they walk away?
They can't get a building permit, so it's, they can't get a CIO, so it's a stormwater system, they can't get a building, I apologize, they can't get a CIO, so it's a stormwater system, they're required by state law to maintain. So the only bond will be for, they can't even build trucks.
And there's also, there's also the maintenance agreement between the village and the applicant for the stormwater.
Yeah.
But there's also that maintenance agreement that.
What happens then is, it's just the worst-case scenario, all right? So let's say that.
You know, the local law, it has, it has a section where we go in and claim it, which is actually, believe it or not, it's, it's, it's a, like the standard adopted law from the state.
Does this need to address the transition to a homeowners association for maintenance?
It's irrelevant, it's, it's, it doesn't place immediately.
Because of three years, after three years, it reverts to a homeowners association? Or is there a time limit? Or, I seem to recall somewhere in my head, certain percentage sold that goes to the homeowners association?
Not aware of that.
We generally don't get a bond in the owner's.
I hate to get into a homeowner-applicant dispute about the transfer, and then nothing happens on the maintenance during that dispute period.
Oh, well, they have to maintain it.
They have to maintain it according to state law, and violation goes on the owner of that parcel.
Say whoever owns, whoever owns parcel at that parcel.
So if it's the HOA, and the HOA is going to hit with.
HOA is homeowners association.
Of course, we'll get them violated.
Okay, 23, the applicant must comply with any recommendations of New York State Department of Transportation and the village's traffic consultant with respect to any signage and pavement markings at the intersections of the 30 South Broadway, driveway, and Broadway. 24, a separate building permit must be obtained for each set of attached single-family houses, let's just demonstrate. Building permits for the dwelling units, mods 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27, which are the affordable units, must be applied for prior to December 31st, 2016. Lastly, all conditions of this resolution shall be binding on any subject and owner of the subject's property, whether an owner is home or is parked.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from any of the board members on the DHL? Either's in the resolution? No? Was it going to have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Or any other comments? Any discussion? No? All in favor? Hope that you want to say something, George?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm going to approve this based on a couple of things. Number one is that what we were given, this amendment, I believe that we've been following and trying to mitigate whatever issues there are, but I can't, so I'm approving this, this whole, our resolution, but I can't support what was done prior to coming here. I personally believe that this project is overbuilt, that the amendment allows for too much of an upzone for this property. And I think that, I'm hoping that those that made this decision will look at that, review it, and the next time something comes, they're a little bit more careful about how they come up with their findings. So I think that what I look at is that our planning board has done a good job of trying to mitigate some of these issues and work with what we've been given. But I think, at least for me, I want to be very clear that I'm not necessarily supportive of this project.
Okay. Any other comments? No? Kind of a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
And I'd just like to add that I do think the applicant did a great job being transparent about what they did, what they wanted to do, all the way through, so I don't, I think they're not what I'm concerned with.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you all for your time.
All right.
You're going to have to make the changes on the second one, also.
I'll hand it in.
Okay, you made on two copies.
It's two to one.
Yeah, two to one.
Yes.
Hello. Two to one. Two to one, man, on second.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
So moved.